Good evening, everybody. For the record, 5:15 PM on Thursday, September 14th, 2023, time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. We are out of executive session, so I’ve called the regular meeting to order. As always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Councilmember Harold, would you lead us?
I’d be honored.
Hey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, our first item on tonight’s agenda is Citizen Comment. This would be a time when any member of the audience could come up and address the city council on either something that’s on tonight’s agenda or something that’s not on tonight’s agenda. We do have a public hearing regarding amendments to Title 10 of our zoning code, and if you’re here for that, we will take public comment at that time. But if you want to address the council on anything else, we’d give you three minutes or so, although I don’t know if Tim is timing that very closely. He’s trying. So, just come up, give us your name and address for the record, and we’d give you a couple of minutes. So, anybody interested in addressing the council this evening? Come on up. Come on up, sir.
My name is Michael A. McKee. I live at 1406 Millardale. I’m here to talk with you about some things going on in this community that all of you, everyone here in this room, knows about. We’re here to talk with you. My wife and I have come because we are greatly appalled at what is going on, and it’s through the council and the mayor that things change. The policy is made by you, and it trickles down through the various departments. We are just absolutely appalled at the growing lawlessness in this city. And in our street, Millardale, it has become a racetrack. People no longer respect the 25 mile an hour speeding laws there. There is no law enforcement anymore. We greatly respect the police department and what they do, but their hands have been tied more and more, partly through policy from you folks, we believe. And we would like that you, as a council and a mayor, would please give this some attention and that we would have a safe, quiet street again in our neighborhood. It is terrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Who else would like to address the council? Yes, ma’am. Come on up.
My name is Janet Murs. I live on Millardale Avenue. I wrote letters to each of you, asking you to take consideration of the safety of our students and our children and our families on Millardale Avenue. I respect the police department. I know they have few officers to patrol, but I think that we have come to a place where that needs to be a first priority, especially for the safety around our schools. And we have two schools on our street, younger children, not just high schoolers, and we have very few sidewalks as the street goes up. We have students that have to walk out into the street and come back when a sidewalk is there because cars are parked. People speed by our house all day long, and it’s not just the students. I’m sorry, but we have so many people going 50, 60 miles an hour by the time they hit my house, and I’m only in the 1,200 block. They continue to race until they have a turnoff. They continue to pick up speed. It’s like a thoroughfare for them. And I wrote letters to all of our neighbors and asked them to speak or to come in tonight because I think we’ve had a meeting, we’ve called the police, we’ve called the city, we have made many efforts to get attention to how serious this really is. It really is serious. And I, as someone living on this street, it would impose on me as much as anyone to have speed bumps or something along those lines. Speed bumps are not really that expensive, I don’t believe, once they’re installed. I know it’s a pain for the snow drivers to have speed bumps, but really and truly, if we could have several sets of speed bumps up and down that street, I really think that that would be one thing that would help, and more police presence. And I just don’t want to see any more children that run out for a ball in the street, and people are going so fast they couldn’t stop if they wanted to. So, I’m asking you to please help us keep the kids safe and help them get to school or to wherever they are going without having to worry about getting run over. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Janet. Rob, do we have improvements to Millardale in front of the high school up to the cross? Did we get a grant for that? I can’t remember.
We currently have an application in with the TIB. We don’t know the outcome yet.
Okay. And that’s for the stretch that’s non-sidewalk between the high school and...
It’s missing, it’s completing some missing sidewalk links.
Okay. Thank you. And I’ll spend some time with the chief and see if we can come up with some other plans. I know this is a... Janet, I got your letter, and Mr. McKee, so we’ll do our best to see if we can come up with something that helps. Maybe we can get a police vehicle out there in one of the mornings to see if we can...
Speed bumps are better than police officers.
Yeah. Speed bumps, though, if you think about a speed bump, if there’s three or four of them, I don’t think you’ll ever get out of the high school parking lot. I mean, because the ones that...
Up Millardale, not in front of the high school.
Yeah. Wherever you go with those, it’s... People gotta stop to go five miles an hour to go over them, and so...
Well, it’s a good one down here.
Well, no, I don’t... Yeah. Again, I... Yeah. That’s not quite what I would call a... We’ll work with our staff and see if there’s something we can come up with. Hey, Janet?
It isn’t just when kids are going to school.
Yeah.
It’s all day long, when they get out from sports. That’s a big kicker. And then about 9:00 or 7:00 o’clock at night.
Okay. Anybody else who should address the council on something that’s of concern to them? Yes, ma’am?
Hi. My name is Denise McBurney. I live at 930 Wheeler Hill Road. Can I pass these out to you?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
McBurney?
After speaking to many prominent wise people in the community at every jurisdiction, East Wenatchee, Douglas County, Sheriff Morrison, I was sent here to talk to you. I’m a little nervous. I don’t usually do this.
You’re fine.
Okay. So, hi, my name’s Denise McBurney. I’m here today to request to be added to the agenda for a future city council meeting, as I would like to look at the possibility of making a change to the Wenatchee Police Department’s standard operating procedures in regards to how they handle missing persons cases. One of the issues that I’d like to address is that it appears that the Wenatchee PD’s policy is missing a crucial part of the endangered, endangered missing persons criteria. According to the Washington State Patrol’s handout and my in-depth conversations with Olympia’s MUPU unit... And then, and Maria out in Old Station. Besides the silver alert and indigenous person alert, it’s my understanding that the endangered missing person advisory criteria should include a person of any age who is missing and in danger due to age, physical or mental health, or severe weather conditions, and is not able to return to safety without assistance, as shown here on the Washington It appears that the Wenatchee PD’s standard operating procedures for endangered missing persons advisory 317.5 only includes the silver alert, which is targeted to find a person who is 60 years of age or older and a missing indigenous person alert. Can we please discuss this further at an upcoming meeting? I am hoping that we can make a change, as in the future, families in similar situations will have access to resources and services which will better the chances of their loved one being found alive. Here’s a copy of the...
Yeah, so we got both of those.
The soap.
Our code and the state patrol, yeah.
Yeah. And so, on a personal note, my son Travis Coleman has been missing since April 22nd, 2023. I would like to use my platform today to request help from the community or y’all in finding my son. I’m asking for the support and guidance of anyone who might know how to organize and launch a recovery search in the foothills above Cherry Street in Wenatchee. Please help us to find his body before snowfall. I visited North Central Washington News, KPQ Radio, and the Wenatchee World yesterday. They are willing to announce the search and recovery information as soon as we have a date and details. Some guidance and assistance would be so appreciated. Here’s my contact information. By the way, I got this from one of the talks I had yesterday with the media people. They’re like, they’re recording you. I’m like, okay. My number is 509-741-0500. My email is DDMC-BUR-NIE@gmail.com. It’s Travis’s birthday today. He would have been 39 years old. I’ve never spent a birthday apart from him. The party may have been a little late, but we always had one eventually. I want to thank Team Heart and my special friends in the community and afar who helped me in so many ways. Thank you, beautiful souls. I love you. I’m here today because the Wenatchee Police Department turned us away when our missing persons report was made and filed with the Washington State MUPU unit. They refused to help us look for him and turned us back to the community. I’ve requested all the services and resources, but because they wouldn’t investigate or contact the people that saw Travis last or go to his home or anything, we weren’t able to get the resources and services that the rock stars over in Douglas County got when they searched for Jesse. I wrote a story about that as I interviewed the law enforcement officer that was in charge of that search and rescue and all the services and resources that were brought in from all around the state, even as far as Lewiston, Idaho, with the dogs that were able to smell through the boat into the water. I know I don’t have very much time, and I thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, and I’m sorry that your son is missing, and I will meet with the chief, and we will get back to you regarding the policy change. So, whether we have a public meeting for that or how we go about looking at that, but we will get back to you on the policy issue, and I will talk with the chief about some of the other stuff that you mentioned.
Okay. I have met with Chief Crown, and I’m thankful for him.
Thank you. So am I.
Maybe you could leave your information over here, and then that way, maybe personally, we can put it on our Facebooks and things like that. So, if you’d leave your information?
Yes.
That’d be great.
Yeah, we have it.
Ten and a half.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to address the council on something that’s important to them? Yes, ma’am?
Hi. That’s awfully sorry to follow. Sorry about Travis. That’s hard to follow because that’s what matters most. My name is Monique Lot, and I was raised here, and I am raising my five children here as well. I am a woman, wife, and mother with sound, strong Christian mind. My husband and I own several businesses here in Wenatchee as well. My concern is the homeless RV parks. We purchased land seven years ago and built a brand-new building on it for Wenatchee Valley Shuttle a few years ago. We have male and female drivers coming and going at all hours of the day and night and early mornings. Since the Wenatchee Rescue Mission was allowed to expand with the homeless RV park, we now are the nucleus for all drug and criminal activity. Before this, there were a few questionable people roaming around. We now literally escort people away from cursing and screaming in our windows, parking RVs in our back, picking up tents, stealing items. We remove drug paraphernalia and even human feces from our property. We would not have built a $2.5 million building if we had known this was the case. In one of our companies, it’s a commercial landscaping company, my manager several years ago came out of drug rehab, and we worked with him. I had him drug test every week. I said, hey, I’m willing to give you a chance, but we’re going forward. We’re not, I’m not messing around. I tested him every week. He did great. He was fantastic. And after six months, he came to me and he said, I don’t even need to work anymore. He started using drugs again. He said, I won’t pass this week, Monique. And he goes, so I’m going to go ahead and I can just, I got this RV that doesn’t even run, but I’m gonna go park it and live, do what I want. And I thought, is this really the community we are, that we’re encouraging this mindset of no responsibility? I do understand, by the way, in this, that there are some people who are just priced out of living. Okay? Totally different mindset from where most of them are. Okay? Being a neighbor, I’ve driven my truck over there many times. It’s not being manned. There’s rules. Rules, like a teenager uses rules, right? And so, my experience is that when it first came, I was promised there was gonna be patrolling, there was gonna be police officers. When I called back, receiving this notice, that now we’re tripling the size of this location, which, by the way, having been raised here, I never even, you never even saw people there, because there were so few at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission prior to this. Now, it literally has become the nucleus for all of this activity, where the rest of the city, businesses, families, they’re happy because they don’t see it. But at what point are you gonna take it on off of us? We have had to put up a prison fence around our four acres out there and literally have spent just shy of $100,000 in items stolen and preventative measures to tighten up our safety, and we’re done. It’s time for you to start footing our bill, if this is the direction we’re going to go. We are the ones paying taxes. We are the taxpayers. And yet, I was told, when I’ve met with several people, Linda included, Glenn, several others in the city, Sheriff Morrison, I’ve met with several people about this, and I said, I understand that this is a problem. I understand we need to work through solutions. I’m willing to also help with that. Heck, I own a bus company. I’m happy to transport people where they need to go, but it does need to be solved. And I said, we need more police presence. I need more security. We need to hire another person to be there, right? To enforce things, because they have grown. And I was told, quote, “If we have too much of a police presence, we will scare the people from living there.” What the crap? If we have too much of a police presence? So then, those people doing drugs should not be living there, right? Like, we’re the taxpayers. I’ve talked to all of our businesses, up and down, south Wenatchee Ave., and everyone has had the same feelings. Many of them said that they would like to send in notes, and I said, great, send in some emails, and I’ll send them on to Glenn and who needs to receive them. But we have all received theft. We have all received situations like this, where we literally have people... I had a lady, I was out pulling weeds with my kids. I believe in hard work. I was out pulling weeds instead of our landscape crew do it, and guess what? This lady, you know, talking and swearing and totally high, comes walking in our driveway to go to our back. And I say, kids, cover your ears. And I walk back, and I say, excuse me, ma’am. Excuse me, ma’am. I need you to go out here. This is private property. And she turns and just starts going crazy, right? And I was like, this is nuts. I’ve called the police before. They told me they were busy, and they’d get there in about an hour and a half. Super helpful. Super helpful. And I’m not saying that to just the police presence, because I know they are not being supported in the way they need. I know that they have a lot on their plate, and our hands are tied in a lot of these areas. I know in my conversations also with Glenn is there’s a lot of restrictions. I do understand this with legislative, and I said, well, can you at least, you know, if they’re moving in, can you at least have some responsibility? Where they have to help with the maintenance or landscape there, so that there’s something involved in giving back, instead of this whole mentality of, I can just live my life, however, you’re gonna take care of me. Because all we’re breeding is more of that mindset and more of that happening.
So, you gotta wrap up. We’re quite a ways past your three minutes.
I will. Yes. Okay. And I am not a woman of drama. I have no time for nonsense, but I feel a huge responsibility, not only to my team I work with, but to our community. I will not look back in 20 years and say, if only I had gotten involved and stood and spoke up. We are better than Seattle. We are better than Portland, but do not make us them. And I’d be happy to help work through some conflicts there and happy to address some things in the future, but this is a real problem that we gotta get a hold of, or I’m gonna start sending my bills and the others. Like, this cannot be just on us, because there’s, if they were in other parts of the city, it would be, they’d be here too. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Great. Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. [applause]
Anybody else who wants to address the council? Seeing no other takers, we will move on to our regular agenda. The first item is the consent items regarding approval of today’s agenda vouchers and our minutes from our previous meetings, and authorize the mayor’s signature on an easement, and authorize the mayor’s signature on a hold harmless agreement.
Your Honor, I’d make a motion that we adopt the consent items consisting of the approval of the agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings. The motion also includes authorization for the mayor to sign the sanitary sewer line easement with Deanne Schnibby on parcel 232029588010, and a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the hold harmless agreement for Kevin and Karen Lammer’s landscaping project on their property at 2014 Maiden Lane, Wenatchee, Washington.
Second? Motion, my councilmember Kula, second, my councilmember Huffaker, to approve this evening’s agenda vouchers and our minutes from our previous meetings, and to authorize the mayor to sign a sanitary sewer line easement from Deanne Schnibby on parcel 232029588010, and authorize the mayor to sign a hold harmless for Kevin and Karen Lammer’s landscaping project on their property at 2014 Maiden Lane, Wenatchee,
I’ll make just a quick comment. Those last two items are ones that we probably haven’t seen before, and internally, we’re sort of working our way through policies and procedures and who gets to sign what sort of documents, and I think in the past, department heads have signed those. I think our city attorney has said that perhaps these need to be signed by the mayor, so we will be looking at policies and procedures to figure out who has signing authority. We’ll bring that to you sometime in the near future to try to make it easier for staff to do their jobs, so that’ll be coming sometime soon. All right. So, we got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Presentations, we got two tonight. The first, of course, is our favorite one, which is years of service milestones. So, Carrie and Caitlin, come on up. I’ll come on down and...
Great. Good evening, council members. We are excited to introduce to you our employees who have reached service milestones. I’m gonna start with our five years, and we have a few that are here, but I want to make mention of those that aren’t here tonight, so that for record, we are showing our appreciation. Five years of service, we have Jerry Craddock. He works in Public Works as a water service specialist. Kevin Countryman is a utility worker in our water division in Public Works. Officer Riley Cook, sorry, with our police department. And then Officer Reed Klein, also with our police department. And then Billy Hale, our maintenance worker, too, in our streets division under Public Works. Here tonight is our phenomenal facilities manager, Alyssa Schaefer, and I’d like to invite her forward for her award in person and picture with the mayor.
How many years for Alyssa?
Five.
Five.
Yes.
[applause] If you wouldn’t mind standing in front of the council, and then we’ll try to scratch the council if you’re willing.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Come here. Why are my eyes running off?
We’re scratched.
I’m behind you.
Don’t get your tummy hurt.
Hopefully, it’s like ten more.
What?
One more.
You reparted it?
I know. Thank you.
You did already. So, moving up to our 10-year service milestones, we have Tim Hurt. He’s a maintenance worker, too, in our Parks Maintenance Division. We have Kevin Batiste, who’s a corporal in our police department. Josh Nguyen, who’s a traffic and lighting, senior traffic and lighting technician under our Public Works Department. And our very own Glenn DeVries, our Director of Community Development, for 10 years. [applause]
I knew I was getting my picture taken. I wouldn’t want to get your shirt.
Thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin. Congratulations, Claire.
Moving up to our 15-year service milestone, we have Todd Davis. He’s a maintenance worker, two, in our streets department under Public Works. Sergeant Nathan Hahn with our police department, and Corporal Ron Wilson of our police department. And here with us tonight is Officer Chris Wright of our police department. 15 years. [applause] And then 25 years of service. All of these milestones are amazing, but Bill Schneider, he’s our maintenance worker, two, in streets under our Public Works Department, and he has done an amazing job, completely dedicated to the city of Wenatchee, and we appreciate you, Bill. [applause]
Thank you.
And then, I just want to make mention that also Maria Reyes, she couldn’t be here tonight. She’s our permit specialist in the Community Development Department. Something came up, but she really wanted to be here, but we want to thank her for her 25 years of service as well. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Carrie and Caitlin, and all of our employees for all of their great work. It is a remarkable team that works with us every single day. Presentations, this next one is regarding Constitution Week, and I don’t always get to read Proclamations, but I’m gonna give this one a try, so I will read this and end of the record. So, Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd, 2023,
That's cool.
And then I just want to make mention that also Maria Reyes, she couldn't be here tonight. She's our permit specialist in the Community Development Department. Something came up, but she really wanted to be here. But we want to thank her for her 25 years of service as well. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Carrie and Caitlin, and all of our employees for all of their great work. It is a remarkable team that works with us every single day. Presentations. This next one is regarding Constitution Week, and I don't always get to read Proclamations, but I'm going to give this one a try. So I will read this and into the record. So Constitution Week, September 17th through 20th, September 23rd, 2023, whereas September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through the 23rd of September as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Frank Coons, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness whereof, I have caused the great seal of the city of Wenatchee to be fixed on this 14th day of September of 2023, Frank Coons, Mayor. I don't know if anyone is here to get the proclamation. Oh, come on up. I'm getting my steps in today.
Thank you.
I'm Carrie.
Carrie, how are you? Do you want to address everybody? Come on up, say something.
I was just on the radio nervous this afternoon talking about the Constitution.
This is easy. This is way easier.
Hi, my name is Carrie Venable-Bird, and I am the chair for the John Kendrick Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, who actually in 1955 petitioned Congress to start this Constitution Week. And in less than a year, if you can believe that, it was signed into law. And things were tough in the in the 1955s. A lot of things were changing. They had a it was is really important to them because they had a lot of civil rights issues going on right then, and they wanted to basically make sure that people who were having their civil rights violated knew their constitutional rights, and that's kind of why it got started. That and also Congress tried to pass an income tax, a new income tax, and and they wanted to make sure that they knew people knew they could do that. But yeah, it's it's a very interesting thing. We only have 4,400 words in our constitution. It's the shortest constitution of all modern governments. So I encourage everybody to read it. It was written so that way the common man could understand it. So it's very special, and thank you for doing this every year. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. All right. Action items. We have a number of them this evening, so we will start with a discussion, I guess, or I don't know if it's a discussion with action regarding our multifamily tax exemption. So as you know, we've asked staff to take a look at some different options that we might do regarding the eight year and the 12 year exemptions and whether we might find get rid of it altogether or find some areas where it might work. So Stephen's done some work over the last month, and we'll let you sort of present to the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council. Again, Stephen Newenchwander, Planning Manager for the city. At our August 17th workshop, we discussed the multifamily tax exemption. And I kind of went through the policies that that govern that regulation as well as the projects that are in the program, those that are pending. And then we have a couple of applications that you'll receive this evening for new projects into the multifamily tax exemption exemption program. So at the end of that workshop in August, the council provided direction on some options and some latitude for staff to work on. A revised target boundary and looking at a couple of different options. So those options are in your agenda report, but I also wanted to bring those to you this evening. There we go. So the first option that the council put forward was to retain the eight year exemption and add a 20% affordable housing requirement.
Can I ask a stupid question just right out of the bat? Can we make it 5%?
We can make it whatever we want. So.
On the eight year, we can make whatever we want?
That's correct. So the the legislation allows jurisdictions to amend or alter those percentages. The only one that we can't change is the 12 year to less than the legislative standard of 20%. So we can increase that. So this model follows the East Wenatchees' adoption of their multifamily tax exemption that they did earlier this year. So that was eight years at 20%, 12 years at 30%. Under this option, we would we could retain the existing boundary. So that's from Western on the west and then pretty much the rest of the city. So that would allow us to do that. So that's one option that the council considered last month. A second option that was discussed was to revise the target boundary. So we had looked at our low to moderate income census tracts and in relationship to where projects were being constructed and those that are in the program. The vast majority of those projects are north of Fifth Street and not in our census tracts that are generally low to moderate income residents. So we looked at at that low to moderate income data and are proposing a shrunken down boundary so that with a green line on the map. The purple line, little difficult to see with some of the purple zoning, but that's along Western up through Old Station and then south and South Wenatchee. So this proposal would be to retain the eight year exemption as is, not requiring an affordable housing requirement. So as we discussed last month, really, the the eight year exemption is intended to incentivize multifamily development, and I think over the last 10 years or so, we've been very successful in doing that, and and we have a lot of multifamily projects that have been built. Many of them have applied for and are a part of the multifamily tax exemption program. So the the option of retaining the eight year without an affordable housing requirement would be to again incentivize multifamily development, but in a more targeted area which with it that is mostly made up of our low to moderate income census tracts. Also, last month, we had Erin Fonville from the Assessor's Office, and she came and talked about the tax shift. And that that shift does happen throughout the city. And so whenever we talk about these exemptions, many people refer it to as an abatement of taxes. There is no abatement of those taxes. They're just shifted throughout the city to other taxpayers. Again, in this option, retain the 12 year affordable housing, and then outside of that green boundary, no new applications could be submitted. So it would be very targeted to that to that new MFT boundary. So that's option two. Option three that we discussed, again, is looking at this revised boundary. But within that boundary, having the eight year and 12 year programs, but both with an affordable housing requirement. Again, following the East Wenatchee model at 20% for the eight year, 30% for the 12 year. And then outside the boundary, no new applications could be submitted. So those were the options that we discussed last month, kind of refined them here a little bit. You know, happy to answer questions that you have. You know, we can we can continue to refine this, and we can come back. We can draft up some some code for you to look at at a public hearing. So happy to entertain questions that you might have for me this evening.
Travis, you seem to be talking to me a lot about this. You want to chime in first?
So sure. I'm I'm great with removing the the freebie, for lack of a better descriptor, for for multifamily home. Looking at the eight year, if we can move that percentage around, I think if you talk to any developer, if you take 20% of their profit away, they're not going to do it. So I'm I'm leaning the other direction of let's encourage multifamily home development and require all of them to have some component of affordable housing in that. I think 20% is too big of a chunk. I think we will stop all multifamily developments in the city if it's a requirement to have 20% of that affordable housing. So I guess my idea is to reduce that in the targeted area that we would like to see that in the lower income housing. I don't know what that number is exactly as a percentage of a requirement for affordable housing. I'm thinking five or maybe 10% in that area. And then looking at the rest of the city and the eight year exemption of 20 or 15 or 20% requirement. So I think if we want the private sector to help us solve this affordable housing issue in our in our community, this is a way to actually get affordable housing and have the private sector build it.
Do we still do 12 year?
We can have that as an option. I don't know if anyone will take that 12 year, but as far as the eight year goes.
Listen, if no one's doing the 12 year with 20, no one's going to do the 12 year with 30, right? So that ain't gonna happen.
Well, no one's going to do any of them with the freebie.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, eight, it doesn't mean if you change the percentage on the eight, it doesn't mean that that multifamily is not going to be constructed. It just means that they're not going to qualify for the eight year tax exemption, and they can they can do whatever market rate housing that they want.
Sure. But I want I want affordable housing as part of our plan, and I think this is the way we can get it.
I think what you would hope is that if you let's say you choose the five, let's say we go to 5%. Let me well, let's say it's 5%. Let's say someone builds 100 units. All right. So now we're going to get at least five that are affordable. And one would hope that the tax break that we provide to them over the eight years would go, that's still worth it to me. And at least we got five, which is five better than zero, right? And if you did that, are we going to get? But there's got to be math there where the developer is going to say, yeah, that makes sense for me. And I'm inclined to go to the lower number versus the higher number just to see how it works. We can always change our mind.
Sure.
And I'm probably, you know, I just, this is my scribble. I scribbled, you know, the eight year at 5%. But I'd probably use the purple boundary because I think the purple boundary is bigger. And if we want, if those 100 users are getting built and we want five, do I care where those five are? And I don't care where those five are. I just want them here somewhere. And so that was my gut reaction. That was when you were talking, I was just, that's sort of what I scribbled here. Eight year, 5% purple boundary was where I was sort of landing, but that's just me internally. And I think I'd leave the 12 year at 20, and no one's going to do it. And there's no reason to not have it in our code in case something magically changes. But at least on on Travis's point, if you're going to get some tax break, tax shift, at least we're going to get some units, right? But you got to, it's got to be where it and listen, if we get a couple to take the five, maybe we'll move it to 10 at some point, but I think we got to get someone to start building stuff that's got some affordable component to it if we're going to give them the break.
Mayor, is that how you would do though? If some people take the five, then you move it to 10? Or would you do?
You guys can remember.
If no one takes the 10, then you move it to five?
I'll be sitting in the bar during.
I'm just asking people with more experience. My whole thing is I still want city planning to have a tool to and then the taxpayers need to know that, you know, they're paying more, they need to know that it's going to something they care about, which I've heard is affordable housing.
Yeah.
So I'm I kind of agree with.
And maybe the number is 10%. I don't know, but I I I want to see some built. I want to see just anything that's got a tooth in it to go, yeah, we've got it. And this is how it's working, and it's working okay for us. Good. Then maybe we hit the sweet spot. But that's my that was my initial gut reaction. I could be, I don't get developed, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, as we initially looked at the re the reduced boundary was really to keep the eight year without an affordable housing component and target those that new development in those in specific areas. I think if you're going to add an affordable housing component to the eight year, then I would recommend as well to stay with the current boundary and and leave that open as as broad as we can to continue to encourage multifamily development throughout the community and receive some of those affordable units.
And I think we'll something's going to happen here in the next, and I don't know what it's going to be, but we're starting to sense a little bit of this giving incentives for people to get into rentals now, right? First month is free on some places. So we're starting to see a little bit of capitulation in the market. Obviously, we've got a number of folks that are trying to sign up for the eight year after this, which means there's going to be another couple hundred apartment buildings or more. We've got it'll be interesting to see where this lands in terms of of are we getting enough units built? I I think we're starting to get to that point, and I think you're starting to see some developers sort of slow down a little bit with interest rates being high and and maybe the rental market isn't what it used to be, you know, a couple of years ago. So it'll be interesting to sort of see what happens. But I I think we need to figure out a way that I generally don't agree with Travis, but I do on this one. I think we need to we need to have some component if we're going to give them the tax break.
It's been a good arm wrestle, but Stephen, I have one more maybe dumb question. Is this only new development? Or I my my big concern is the downtown core where we have two, three levels that are completely vacant that that maybe this would be a spark that could help those levels be redeveloped for for multifamily housing.
Yeah, so there are a a couple of different components to this. One is for new construction. There is also a rehabilitated housing unit component as well, and we have not tapped into that yet either. No, no one has has taken this up on that.
But that would also require a fourplex or greater?
Correct.
So.
I believe so.
So if you think about what's being built downtown, a lot of times that someone takes it upstairs and makes two little places, one for them to live in and one to rent.
May not qualify.
Difficult to get to a fourplex sort of to fit these qualifications.
If the building fit the size, there is the opportunity.
Yeah, that opportunity exists. You know, I don't. Bryce, are you here? So I I don't want to put Bryce on the spot. This is Bryce Snyder. He's here for the next two multifamily tax exemption applications. He's with Shoe Cart Construction.
Bryce, come on up.
He might, if you don't mind Bryce putting on the spot, but he might be able to. He he and I have had multiple conversations about the multifamily tax exemption program and the affordability components and, you know.
Hey.
We've talked on the phone.
Yeah. Bryce, educators, what's going on?
To provide a little insight, if you're open to that, on the developer's perspective of affordable housing and the percentages and because I know you've looked at.
Yes.
They looked at the 12 year program.
Yes, I'm I'm not sure what question you wanted me to start with or walk through from my standpoint or.
Your thoughts on the MFT? As we've talked about your project and you considered the 12 year program, maybe some of the things that kept you from going that route versus where you're at now?
Sure. Well, I I think from my standpoint, the one thing that and this is no one's really talked about this yet, but in in your program, what really needs to be done is you you need to, you know, people keep saying the affordable piece to it, but you need to qualify what that means from the owner's standpoint and and how you categorize that, because the way it's structured now, it basically reads that that if if I own the building, then I I've got an obligation to lease, whether it's 5%, 20%, 30% of the units to quote unquote affordable tenants, which make less than, I think it's 80% of the AMI. But there's no parameters thereafter, meaning if someone makes $1,000 a year, I've got to rent to them at no more than 30% of $1,000, you know, some $75 a month in rent. Now, that's obviously not, but but you start doing the math at $30,000 a year. And all of a sudden, if all 20% of those affordable units are leased to people that make that, then all of a sudden you're you're going backwards. And then we've got problems with lenders and everything else. So that's kind of the first thing I would say just from from someone who's tried to figure out how to make it work and then gone through and looked looked at the math without any certainties. You guys know everyone likes certainty, looking forward. That makes it, for me, almost impossible to make a business call either way. And you kind of go, that's a lot of liability. And then on top of that, you know, you you run the risk if you've got all of your tenants making very low income with, you know, a lot of other challenges that may come with that, which no one wants to talk about, but that can happen, right? So then you're even bigger risk that the the market, the the tenants paying market rate. Go, oh, hang on, this is, you know, I don't feel safe here where there's there's too many, you know, crime issues. I'm not saying that the two are correlated directly, but the perception in a lot of people that are paying market rate. So those are things to be sensitive about. But I would say the the main thing from my standpoint, as someone who's tried to make these systems work, is to spend more time talking about what the affordable component actually means. Because in the way it's drafted, and I spent quite a bit of time in this, did a bunch of, and it's 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 not qualified.
So Stephen, do we get to define that ourselves, or is it RCW defined that for us?
It's all defined in the legislation. So it's low to moderate income. So it's up to 115% AMI. Area median income is moderate. Anyone less than 80% is low. And then they can't also expand more than 30% of their monthly income on on housing.
Are you required to take the thousand, the person that makes $10,000 a year? If I applied for one of your one of the low income ones, are you required to take me?
That's the the short answer is probably yes. Now, I I don't want to get into the league leagues of it, but yeah, there there's some issues there too, but and $1,000 is too low.
I'm trying to.
Point is, if you just do the math, if if you have 20% of the units and that they're supposed to be for for affordable units within the range of 115% of AMI and 20%, you you have to run different models, assuming, okay, what if everyone who makes 20% applies? And the I don't have the rents with me, but it's like a $600 rent when the market rent maybe $1,800 for a two bedroom unit. And then the math, you know, you wouldn't even would would not even be able to pay your mortgage then.
Yeah, 100%.
So that's that's and there again, that's not a that's more of a policy clarification issue that should be focused on in my my view. And so other cities do it differently. Like I've seen it in in Seattle, for instance, there's a set rent. You say, okay, you've got a lease. If it's 20 20% of the units are affordable units, you know, 40% of those have got to be leased to people making, you know, between 60 and 80% of AMI. And then there's different programs. If you wanted to go lower in that stack, you have to do a higher percentage of your overall units, but at a lower rate. So that's just from someone who's tried to make sense of the, and I get everyone likes talking.
Have you done those in other jurisdictions successfully? Okay.
Yes, but but in in all the jurisdictions I've done them in, there's a clear mandate of what the rents are. So you can say, okay, market rents are here. And my quote unquote affordable units, depending on the program and the family size and all that, there's a schedule that that the city will publish. I don't publish. You have to call them to get it, but annually it gives you the rents and tells you what the AMI is. So then then you can and frankly, you guys can do the same thing. Say, okay, is this going to make sense? Here's the, because otherwise it's very difficult to underwrite. Here's the, because otherwise it's very difficult to underwrite.
Even at, even at 5%, it's like, why would I take the risk? I don't know what the hell the rent's going to be.
Five, I mean, I haven't done the math at five. That's obviously better than 20 if you're, if you're trying to, if you're trying to make the numbers work.
Yeah.
Now, I get you guys have goals to get, you know, as much affordable housing as possible.
Right.
And that's a whole nother, I mean, affordable housing is easy to talk about, very difficult to achieve for a lot of different reasons that, that are not, that's more state level. But the, the cost to build, whether it's for affordable, whether it's for market rate, keeps escalating so quickly, which is in large part because of all the, the, the new Washington.
Energy code, yeah.
Keeps getting passed. So every time the code changes, it adds $15,000 to the unit. But obviously if someone's going to build it, they've, they've got to be paid enough in, in rent or, or be able to sell it for a profit. And currently that's not the case, which is not your purview. But with, with rates, you talked about rates. So we have all these pressures going frankly the, the wrong way to get houses built. And we're going to do the same thing, we all, it's, we overbuild. And then times are tough, you don't build enough and all of a sudden. And but the problem, I mean, you guys need to find the balance between overbuilding. So, and I, I think your, your point was accurate that the market is softening because there is new product in the market now, which not good for me as the owner because it's, the, the rents start to fall. But that's what you need to ultimately create more affordable housing is to have an ample stock. But that's a different argument than we're talking about here.
So what do you think about a setting rental rates? Do you think we could do that?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Give some certainty at least to, to the folks that are looking at the 5% and going, at least I'm going to get this for my units and.
Yeah, I've got some notes to look at other jurisdictions and how they set those, those policies. So and.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure it's not easy to do, but I, I, and I don't know all the, you know, the laws that are involved. But just having some clarity or even if it's a parent or a ban of, you know, you've, you've got to rent between 50 and 70% AMI or 50 and 80% or something like that.
So just another stupid question while we're talking. So I, obviously you guys are on for the 8% or for the eight year for the next project. How important is that to your cash flow to be able to actually build them? I mean, in this market with interest rates high and rents sort of struggling, I mean, is that the difference between actually building and not building?
In this, in, in, as of now, yes. I mean, I mean, to be perfectly honest.
We heard that from another developer a month ago, so I just confirmed.
Well, and so to give you context, we've got two phases. The first phase, which is almost finished, which I think is the first, I can't remember if it's the first or second one. But the, just the, the cost, the hard cost, since we started building that one to now, so that pricing is maybe 12 months old, has escalated 17%. So, and that's in part, it's not truly apples to apples. That's in part because the first phase was under the 2015 code. Now it's under the 2018 code, so there's some added costs. But so the, the cost, the hard cost surprisingly are still rising. Interest rates have tripled. And then the rents have stagnated. So the, the challenges of any, anyone, it's not just here, it's any market in the country trying to get anything built right now at this moment is extremely difficult. And I'd say most things don't pencil. So in this, this case, if, if this program were, were not available, it's, it's unlikely we'd be able to break around on the, the project. And I'm not saying in two years.
No, no, yeah, I'm just.
But as of now, I think that's true for.
That's what I, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing, which is why.
Even with the program, I mean, lending is tight, so there's no certainty. But this is a very uncertain market and it's hopefully getting better. But time will tell. But the, the problem is rates keep going up and costs keep going up and rents are going down. Something's got to change direction, otherwise nothing pencils.
Any questions while we have them here? I appreciate you stepping up and answering our questions because I think it's very helpful to hear from the, from the private sector.
You answer a lot of my lingering questions, so.
All right, so what kind of direction you want to give Stephen?
But I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Sure.
I mean, we've, we've heard some good ideas. I think that we have some more work to do maybe to see if we can structure a program that's better. But in the meantime, I think it's time that we stop having the public assist in building all these apartments. There, you know, there's, there's problems with building too many apartments. It brings in a lot of people, which puts demands on our infrastructure. So I'm kind of inclined to go with option one tonight. I don't know what that percentage might be. Obviously, the 20% at 12 year didn't pencil out for anybody. I don't think 20% at eight years is going to pencil out for anybody. But for now, maybe that's not a bad thing until we have time to relook at this and come up with a new program. But I think the time of having the public support, all these multifamily units being built is, is, is time to stop.
Can you back up to option one since I forgot what that was?
Yeah, option one was essentially eight year at 20%. Again, that number can be whatever the council chooses. This was following the East Wenatchee model per the discussion last month, retaining the 12. This is at 30%. We can keep it at the minimum requirement at 20. And that would also retain the current boundary, which I think if, if we're not going to look at that targeted area and keep the eight without an exact, without affordable housing, I think that's the right choice.
I'm inclined to do the eight with a 5% and make Stephen figure out what the rent should be. And come, leave it where it is right now. I mean, even if we change the rules or adopt something today, it doesn't take effect for what? 30 days, 45 days, there's a time period. So my view is we got to get it fixed by the end of the year. And I would, my thoughts would be do an eight year with a 5% affordable and have Stephen come up with some rents that are at least assured. I'm hoping we approve the ones we have in front of us. And if there's some other ones that pop in the next 30 days, at least we'll get some more built hopefully. And then see if we can find a rent structure that works so that all of a sudden we, we, there's some surety to the developer.
But well, I, 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 I like the idea of the, of the further in-depth study, but I like the idea of getting this fixed right now before more come in. Did this not for affordable housing necessarily. We did it to get more multifamily units. Obviously, we've succeeded. We had developers coming and telling us they're giving away rent. That indicates to me anecdotally that we're, we're doing pretty good.
We overexceed.
And I'd like to get this changed. The other thing I'd mention is that we just seem to kind of keep forgetting about is the tax shift. And I'm really concerned about the tax shift, not maybe to a larger core of the community, but to the folks who are the low, who are already in lower income housing and how that tax shift affects their ability to continue to stay there. As this gets shifted, as we increase utility rates, the, you know, utility taxes go up. That's, we, we just kind of came to, seemed to forget that part of the existing resident and the impact on them.
Other, other members of the council, what do you think? At some point, we got to make a decision on what we're doing tonight, whether it's punt, pass, kick, adopt something.
Terran Akili tended.
I concur with council member Keith.
Which would be adopt option one. And then that would, so we basically put a 20% on the eight, the 12 year won't change. So, okay. I mean, if you did that, then.
We can, I, I'm not opposed to changing the percentage, but we need to do something tonight to get things moving. I mean, I, I was almost, I was almost suggesting that maybe we look at a moratorium and tell he's had time to do it. But one way or the other, we need to do something tonight so that things, things get put in motion. This, this is actually a long overdue.
Yeah, so I'm, you know, whatever the direction of the council, I can have an ordinance to you, not at your next meeting obviously, but what is it, October 12th and, and two meetings?
It sounds today like.
That's about the quickest thing I can turn around.
From Keith and Mark is they want the 30 days starting on Monday. They don't want to wait.
No, not necessarily. I don't want to wait to, I don't want to wait while there's some analysis of the, of the, of the rent issue. Right, the factor in, that's going to take time. And I don't want, I don't, I don't want to take that time. I want something fixed now that does not give away eight year exemptions for doing nothing. I, I'm done with that.
So if we adopted option one tonight, it would go into effect 30 days from now? We could, we could change the.
Well, there's no, there's no ordinance. So this is, this is just a discussion. So that's what I'm saying, I, I can have an ordinance to you. I don't think I can have one to you in two weeks for your next meeting, but I can have one to you.
So what would it take to put in place a moratorium until we?
That's what I turn over to our city attorney to have Steve answer that one.
Well, we'd have to do it by ordinance and we'd do it at the earliest the next meeting in two weeks.
So if we did a moratorium in two weeks, how many days after that does it go into effect?
Immediately.
We could make that effective immediately if it's an emergency, but this isn't, seems kind of questionable.
Yeah.
I think you're better off, I mean, this is basically just retaining what you have is what I hear you saying. Just stay with what you got.
Yeah, except they want to get rid of the eight, the eight years for free. They want to add a low income housing component, which means they want to change it, which means it's got to be published.
If you don't have the 20% on it right now.
Yeah, so I think so, what we're basically saying is you can get us an ordinance because we've got to get it publicized, it's got to be on a public comment, all that sort of stuff. So you just can't do it today.
I'll, I'll work with Steve and Laura and we'll look at the calendar. And if we can turn one around for the next session, we'll have it to you. This is a very minor change. I mean, we're talking adding a couple of words to your existing ordinance. And so that's pretty quick. If we can make the timeframes, then, then we'll have it to you next meeting. If not, it'll be the following.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally okay with the giveaway going away. I don't think it has to be done yesterday before the end of the year 100%. So somewhere in there.
If you, if you look at the rest of your agenda, it needs to be done sooner than.
But, but you have, but I, I think Keith, to be fair, to our friends at Shoe Cart or any other developers in town who are looking at doing a deal, right? You're, 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 you're trying to negotiate a purchase price, right? And it's contingent upon getting all of this stuff done. You spend a year getting all of your permitting done, all of your, and all of a sudden, you know, at the 11th month, we yank the 8% from, the, the eight year exemption from. That's not fair to them who have spent a year and many hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? They need some warning. So it does not surprise me when we have this discussion in August, that all of a sudden we have the next four or five. That, that's, to me, that's just being good business people.
But we are planning on coming back with alternatives and maybe because of that alternative, we'll end up with some affordable housing.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, but I, I don't, I don't want you to.
It's not like, it's not like we're going to just totally slam the door shut and keep them out in the cold. It's just going to, we're going to get a low income housing component.
But I'm sure it's out in the developer community that we're talking about this, which is why we got the rash of applications.
Exactly.
And that's, and I'm fine with that. That's, they've, they've spent all this money knowing that the code is saying that. And for us, what they really want is certainty, right? As soon as we yank something, it's no longer certain, so.
But, but what I see is for certain, that'll bring a, a whole bunch more applications in. And then we're going to see nothing with the low income component.
Yeah, who knows? Yeah. All right, so you'll bring us something consistent with option one?
Yes, and just be sure, keeping the 12 year at 20% legislative minimum. And then I'm hearing five as a number to start with, 5% of the eight year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
You can start.
Okay.
And retaining the existing boundary.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
So bring us an ordinance.
Will do.
Couple of different ones and we'll take a look at them and see what they look like.
Sounds good.
And that'll be at a public hearing, Steve Smith?
Yeah.
Let's make sure that we, when we do that, we have a public hearing so we can take testimony when we adopt this next, when we look at this again.
Yeah, and that makes it difficult to bring it back in two weeks. So it's probably going to be in a month.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, thank you, Stephen.
I'm just going to stay here because I'm on the agenda for the next two items.
All right, so we got two tax exemptions in front of us. The first is the Jacoby and the second is SHCP Maple. Stephen?
Yes, so the first item before you is an eight year multifamily tax exemption. This is for the Sage Crest West Development. This is a 90 unit project. You've already met, or 95 unit, and you've already met Bryce Snyder, who's on, here on behalf of Shoe Cart. They are the contract purchasers of the Jacoby property. The application has provided all of the information consistent with, that's required for the eight year program. And staff has worked with our legal counsel to prepare Resolution 23-20 that would authorize the city to enter into the multifamily tax exemption agreement, which requires the developer to complete the improvements within three years of signing the agreement. I hope you do answer any questions that you might have here.
Any questions for Stephen? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to pass Resolution Number 2023-20 authorizing the execution of multifamily housing, housing, limited property tax exemption agreement, Jacoby.
Second. Motion by council member Hornby, second by council member Roger Nostatian to pass Resolution 2023-20, authorizing the execution of a multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement regarding the Jacoby property. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one?
Next item is the same developer. This is for the Sage Crest Development. This is a 60 unit multifamily residential project at 14, 15 Maple Street. Again, the developers submitted an application, provided all of the required information for an eight year tax exemption. And staff is prepared for you, Resolution 23-21, that would authorize the city to enter into the multifamily tax exemption agreement.
Same song, second verse. May I entertain a motion?
Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to pass Resolution Number 20, 23-21, authorizing the execution of a multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement, SHCP Maple Sage Crest.
Second. Motion by council member Roger Nostatian, second by council member Hornby to adopt Resolution 2023-21, authorizing the execution of a multifamily housing limited property tax exemption agreement, SHCP Maple Sage Crest. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Stephen. Thank you for your great work on this. All right, who's got the next item regarding default mortgage of vacant property? It says Cliff. You don't look like Cliff, although I called you Cliff earlier.
That's right, so might as well come up.
Maybe you're starting to morph into Cliff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In 2019, the city of Wenatchee adopted a, an ordinance for registration defaulted mortgage and vacant properties. We worked a contract in place for the monitoring of those vacant properties. What we received though was something a little differently than, different than what we expected. 90% of what we received were actually vacant apartments or new residential lots. And we found that in going through the, through the data that we received, that we'd spend two to three days a month as staff going through and, and weeding these out. I don't feel like it's a really good use of staff's time to spend that much time going through those vacant properties on a monthly basis. We do find that the information we get on the mortgage properties is very valuable and that helps through that registration to be able to monitor those, to be able to make sure they're maintained and registered. We think that that program's working really well. So we have before you a recommendation to modify the ordinance to remove that component for monitoring the vacant properties as part of this ordinance. And the city legal staff has provided a modified ordinance for your consideration and be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
I was wondering how that program was working.
Really well for the, the mortgages. All of one company just went out of business and so we're switching to another. But in general, we think it's a good program for the mortgage defaults and, and, and following those to keep track of those properties, make sure they're maintained. It's, it's been a good tool.
Excellent. We really got into this when there were more zombie properties, if you will.
Correct. And we've been able to catch up with a lot of them through a variety of means. Great, two great good enforcement officers.
All right, any questions for Glenn? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to adopt ordinance Number 2023-11,
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to adopt ordinance Number 2023-11, amending Chapter 2.12 of the Wenatchee City Code currently entitled Registration of Defaulted Mortgage and Vacant Property and Providing for Severability and Effective Date.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Cuevas to adopt ordinance Number 2023-11, amending Chapter 2.12 of the Wenatchee City Code currently entitled Registration of Defaulted Mortgages and Vacant Property and Provided for Severability and an Effective Date. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Glenn. Do you guys need a break? How are we doing? It's six, get close to 6:30. You want a five-minute break or you want to keep cranking? Any thoughts?
I'm good.
All right, let's go. Low-barrier shelter, Glenn.
All right. Well, I'm happy to be here before you this evening to request a bid award. Three previous actions by the council awarded a contract to the Wenatchee Rescue Mission to operate and manage a system for 44 pallet shelter units for a new low-barrier shelter facility at the Rescue Mission. The council's also approved the purchase of the 44 low-barrier shelters, which we now have in storage and eager to assemble when when the facility's ready. And also in your capital capital facility plan, you've adopted the provisions to actually do the site work and construction. So before you tonight, we have a request to award a bid. We had three qualified bidders and Pipkin Construction submitted a bid for $743,823.23, and that is the lowest qualified bidder. And would recommend that you consider authorizing the mayor to enter into contract for the site work and construction for preparing the site. As far as timing, it's a little bit in flux, but we hope to get started within two weeks. We are working on some PUD overhead line changes that will could change our timeline. We're hoping to still get units in place. There may be might have to work in between snow this year. The nice thing is when the concrete pads, not the concrete, but when the gravel pads are in place, these units can still be installed even when it's cold. So we really are hopeful to try to get them in place even this winter and get them in use. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Glenn? It's exciting that we're finally getting this to the spot where we're going to be able to have some. So and I think there's a preferred motion that I think Glenn handed you that would be the one that we would use in terms of it's got the contractor and the bid amount.
Your Honor, I will move to accept the bid from Pipkin Construction, the lowest qualified bidder, in the amount of $743,823.23, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the completion of the site and utility work and installation of the pallet shelters at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission at 1450 South Wenatchee Avenue, Wenatchee, Washington.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Cuevas to accept the bid from Pipkin Construction, the lowest qualified bidder, in the amount of $743,823.23, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for completion of the site and utility work and installation of the pallet shelters at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission, 1450 South Wenatchee Avenue, Wenatchee, Washington. Any discussion?
Well, usually when somebody says it goes without saying, it needs to be said. Obviously, earlier in our meeting, we heard comments from property owners in that area. You have to be minding our Ps and Qs.
Yeah, and I I think and Scott's back there, and he may have a better feel for what's going on out there. But I will tell you, the way I understand it is there's some folks in our shelter are, for the most part, behaving themselves. There's a group of folks that live down the road in the unincorporated Shalane County, down along the waterfront, that don't behave themselves very well. And I think most of the problems are from the ones that live in the county down along the and we've been working with Sasha and her team, and they can't seem to get anything done. So I I don't think that fixes her issue, right? I don't think she cares where they come from. But I think Scott, am I sort of paraphrasing that somewhat closely?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so I will follow up with the county commissioners. I'll follow up with the sheriff's office. I'll meet with our chief. I'll meet with Scott to see if there's some other stuff that we can do. I will tell you that, you know, I have good friends that live right next door to that shelter in a house, right next to they overlook the safe park, never had a problem. But I'm just telling you. So I again, it doesn't fix her issue, but I I agree with you. We need to mind our Ps and Qs, and we need to try to figure out how to how to convince others to help us with some of those issues.
It is hard to understand how things were one way prior to the shelter, and now it seems to be.
I I don't I don't think it's changed.
Again, it's all perception and everything else, so.
That group has been living down there along the riverfront for a number of years, and it's the ones that do not want to comply. They are a rough group and.
I we really need to try and get to the bottom of that for sure.
And I we will do our best to work with that, but I don't think it stops us from doing what we're attempting to do here. All right, so we've had a motion. We had a second. We had great discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
All right, settlement agreement with Outfront Media, City Attorney, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. Steve Smith, City Attorney. This matter has to do with resolution of a growth management hearings board case that stems from the adoption of our sign code back in late 2019, just prior to COVID. At that time, we revised significantly our sign code, and it included an element of amortizing out billboards in the city over a period of 10 years. One of our billboard companies challenged that to the Growth Management Hearings Board, and that case has been pending. We decided early on that we would try to reach a resolution of that issue through a settlement rather than fighting it in in front of the hearings board. Our goals were to, one, preserve our sign code, and, two, to try to negotiate the removal of several existing billboards. And we have accomplished that, I think, in the settlement in that this case would be dismissed if all these things are completed. And the billboard company would remove seven existing signs on four structures. So we've accomplished that part of it. Even though we have this amortization provision in our sign code, it would have been difficult to actually have these signs removed because they're subject to the scenic vistas act, and the city would have had to pay for the removal of those signs. So it wouldn't have just automatically happened. So the reality is, a lot of those signs probably wouldn't have been removed. So through negotiation, we're able to get rid of several signs. It comes with some requirements on the city's part, and that would include a revision to our existing code that would allow a digital sign within a very specific defined area within the city. And so that's kind of the second part of this. That would have to happen separately from the settlement agreement. And the settlement agreement's contingent on that being done. And so that that is an element of this, that the sign company could potentially put in a digital sign, one sign, if if that came to fruition. So that's the proposal, and we're asking for the authority for the mayor to sign this when we get it finalized and move forward.
So it sounds like the city attorney is recommending that we authorize the mayor to sign the settlement agreement with Outfront Media as presented. Is that sort of the recommendation of the attorney?
That's correct.
And the rest of the scuttlebutt in our motion is nothing we need.
Yeah.
Councilmembers, any questions? I know this is we didn't we dealt with the sign code. Was that three years ago?
Oh, it's December 2019. Yeah.
Yeah, that's more than three years ago.
Yeah, four years ago.
Yeah, almost four. And and we've seen some changes. There's been some, I think, some positive changes in our city as people have moved in and out of buildings and signs have had to been changed. And so I think we're accomplishing what we had set out to do. So I'm glad, hopefully, that the settlement gets a few more billboards down. Any questions with Steve? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I, Your Honor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the settlement agreement with Outfront Media as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Roger Nostatian, second by Councilmember Hornby to authorize the mayor to sign the settlement agreement with Outfront Media as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. Erickson, you must have lost the flip to get to the late part of the agenda today.
What's going on? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. This evening, I'm requesting approval of Resolution 2023-19, which would authorize application to the state for another Recreation Conservation Office grant. The resolution that you have in front of you, you probably can recognize from before, it's the state standard resolution that authorizes application. One little difference is, is that this is a brand-new grant program, just opened up in September of this month, and applications are due essentially tomorrow night. So it's a really short turnaround. And this is specifically for deferred maintenance projects. So normally, the RCO grant projects are for acquisition, development projects. This one is a one-time funding specifically for maintenance. The maximum amount that we can request is $100,000, and there is no matching requirement, which is also a bonus. So we're requesting that we get authorization to apply for this grant, and our project would be to level the outfields of the Lincoln Park baseball field, baseball fields. That's a project that we had in the budget for this year, but we've kind of held off knowing that this app, this grant program was likely to be developed and released this year. So with that, I can try to answer some questions if you have any.
No questions, just a comment. Great job on finding these grants and applying for them.
You always do this. You are so great at this.
Thank you. Well, if I think if we get in the top 50, we'll be in the money. So I've heard there's over 200 applications so far, so.
Got your workout for you, Dave.
Yep.
With that, Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve of revolution, Resolution, sorry, Number 2023-19, authorizing staff to prepare and submit a Recreation Conservation Office Local Parks and Maintenance Program Grant Application for Lincoln Park.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Harold to approve Resolution 2023, authorizing staff to prepare and submit a Recreation Conservation Office Parks Maintenance Program Grant Application for Lincoln Park. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, David.
If we're successful, we should have a grant contract hopefully by the end of the year.
Okay, let us know. Thanks, David. Mr. Jammerman, looks like we're going to do some concrete work.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rob Jammerman, Public Works Department. I'm here tonight to recommend that the City Council award the construction contract for the unit-priced concrete flatwork project SW 2309 of Jones Concrete LLC in the amount of $146,856, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. This is an annual contract that we use with our maintenance division to repair concrete throughout the city after we had to do maintenance repairs such as water services, sewer work, et cetera.
This is just the list that we put together a year or so ago? Is that the ones that are going to get done this time?
This that is a different program. This is a program when the water department or another has to do a service or work, and they they pour out, they pull out curb, gutter, or sidewalk, we ask Jones to come in later and repair that for us. So we've had this as ongoing. It's paid out of the four different funds, our street department, and then the three utility funds. So they all use it. It's a very successful program. It helps us keep us doing our other maintenance operations. So.
Perfect.
Any questions?
Questions for Rob? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to award the construction contract for the unit-priced concrete flatwork project number SW 23-09 to Jones Concrete LLC in the amount of $146,856, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract documents.
Motion by Councilmember Roger Nostatian, second by Councilmember Hornby to award the construction contract for the unit-priced concrete flatwork project number SW 23-09 to Jones Concrete LLC in the amount of $146,856, authorize the mayor to sign the contract documents. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob. Who's got the spring water? Oh, we do have both Nicole and Ryan here.
Apparently, Rob didn't volunteer to take this one. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
So when you get newly, you get a new position, we make you stay till the end.
Yes, apparently.
And when you get experience, then you get to go earlier.
Yes. I'll take this right off the top of my head, yeah. I'm only here to do a quick introduction of Nicole. I introduced her to a few of you at Finance Committee this afternoon. But to the rest of you, Nicole joins us after quite a bit of experience at Washdott, and most recently at a local engineering firm here. She's been with us for the last three years and taken the helm of both Mega Kitchik and Spring Water. So she's off to a great start, and we're very happy to have her. And so I'll leave the action item to her tonight, but just wanted to do that quick introduction.
Thanks, Ryan. Welcome, Nicole.
Perfect. Thank you, Ryan.
What do you got for us today?
Here today to recommend that the City Council authorize the mayor to approve an interlocal agreement between us and the Shalane County Public Utility District for our spring water improvements project. The interlocal agreement essentially provides reimbursement of costs associated with adjusting some of the PUD's infrastructure, which was included a part of our included with our project at the request of the PUD. So that infrastructure includes valve boxes, water meter boxes, and relocating a fire hydrant, which is necessary so we can construct our improvements on spring water.
So our contractor does that, bills us, and then we send a bill to the PUD and they pay us?
Correct.
Isn't it nice to be friends with everybody? Perfect. Any questions for Nicole?
So is this project done, designed, and it's underway? Or what stage are we at in this project?
We are currently in construction. Construction for the project started back in July and is expected to be completed in November. So we haven't quite gotten to the PUD's portion of the work yet. So this is still well timed. But yes, the project is underway.
So that all that work happens after the pavement's done, you get it leveled and raised and moved and.
Yeah, while we're putting in our sidewalk and stuff like that will happen concurrently.
All right. Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for City Council to authorize the mayor to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Wenatchee and Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County, providing for the reimbursement of costs associated with the adjustments of the PUD's infrastructure included as part of the city's project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Cuevas to authorize the mayor to approve the interlocal agreement between the City of Wenatchee and the Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County, providing for the reimbursement of costs associated with the adjustments of the PUD's infrastructure included as part of this. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. All right, we have one public hearing item. That public hearing item is regarding proposed amendments to Title 10 and Chapter 1120 of our subdivision design standards. And so visiting us tonight is Matt Parsons. So we will first hear from Matt. We will turn it over to our vast audience that's remaining for their public comment, and then we'll turn it back over to the council. Are we taking action tonight?
Yes, there are two ordinances before you.
Perfect. All right, Matt, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Parsons, Senior Planner. I have two ordinances. Oh, it's changing up there. Got it. All right. I have two ordinances before you. Ordinance 2023-09, Amendments to Title 10 Zoning Related to Homeless Housing, Some Amendments Related to Mixed-Use Buildings and Multifamily, and also related to farm markets. Ordinance 2023-10, Amending Title 11 Subdivision Related to ULOFT Subdivisions and Community Land Trust, which I'll talk to next. Related to homeless housing. So as you probably know, there was an interim control in effect right now. It was adopted in October 2022. And this is this would be the final adoption. There would be permanent code. And so there's a few components of that. There's new definitions, the definition of a safe park, safe parking area, temporary emergency low-barrier shelter units, a spot in the district use chart. So it's only allowed in the North Wenatchee Business District, South Wenatchee Business District, and industrial. And then also set of general standards. As I indicated in the agenda report, there were some changes. The Planning Commission did recommend approval. There were kind of some last-minute changes. And so I just making want to be very clear about, you know, this is this is different from what the Planning Commission reviewed and and recommended approval for. I think they're important changes. These for the definitions related to just the entities that the city can work with and provide the necessary flexibility for the city moving forward. Also, we're looking at the fencing standards. These spaces will be fenced. And so we have some standards for that. And realized there were some issues related to how it interacts with our existing fencing code and and just to better clarify what what is wanted here. So I just want to be really transparent about those changes from after the Planning Commission recommendation. We have some other little tweaks here and there for a topic related to mixed-use development. We had a kind of a funny thing. We had a kind of a funny thing in our zoning code where you couldn't build, if you wanted a mixed-use development, you couldn't have just one or two units, just the way it was structured. And so we're fixing that because it's an important option to have. And so had to make some other little adjustments around the zoning code. Also, some other fixes related to live-worked dwellings and how it cites, deals with pedestrian-oriented streets. Along with that, there were some adjustments in multifamily housing, just because it's going to be used a little bit differently with those mixed-use developments. And finally, currently, we allow farmers' markets in, along our mixed residential corridors. Those are some of our principal arterials through residential zones, like Fifth Street, portions of Western, portions of Miller. And there's a definition we have of farmers' markets, very broad, which I think is probably a good thing for when it's in our commercial zones. And so I thought the best thing was just to not allow those in, in the mixed residential corridor. And then finally, with unit lot subdivisions, we've been working with the community land trust that's formed, and wanted to open up unit lot subdivision as an option for, for them, and not, not just for them, but for any community land trust. And it's important for them to be able to own the common land in, in a unit lot subdivision. These are, this is the subdivision tool we use for townhomes, if you would want to divide townhomes or cottage development. And so this is just a little insertion into the, the code that would open that up, so it couldn't, wouldn't just be a homeowners association or the, the unit owners, but also you could add the option for the community land trust to own that common land. And that's kind of part of that, that model for the, the community land trust. So we think it's an important tool to allow some affordable housing in our community. And staff recommends approval of both, both of the ordinances. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
So obviously, went through the planning commission, they accepted all of those.
Yep.
And yet, what's before us is different?
And? Just the, the red lines that I included in the agenda report and then?
And that was something suggested by the Public Services Committee.
Correct.
I'm a little troubled that that wasn't through a public process. Usually, when a planning commission recommendation has changed, it is deliberated in public, and our committee meetings are not public. I'm, I'm just a little, you know, I'm a process person.
Yeah, I understand.
Public process person.
Any questions for Matt? Any members of the audience who's addressed the city council on this public hearing item regarding changes to our zoning and subdivision codes? Seeing no takers, I will turn it over to the city council for their action. And I think it's okay if we do both of these at the same time under one motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number 2023-09, amending Wenatchee City Code Title 10 zoning, and ordinance number 2023-10, amending Wenatchee City Code Chapter 11.20 subdivision design standards.
Second. Motion by council member Roger Ostatia, and second by council member Hornby, to adopt ordinance number 2023-09, amending Wenatchee City Code Title 10 zoning, and ordinance number 2023-10, amending Wenatchee City Code Chapter 11.20 subdivision design standards. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt. Thanks for all your work on that. Mayor's report, I will, it's been a while since we've met, so council member Kulas has a 40-person slideshow on Masawa he wants to share with us before we leave.
Just 40?
Just 40.
Follow me on Facebook.
Yeah. Anyhow, we did spend 10 days in, three days in Tokyo, and eight days or five days, whatever it was, in Masawa, and two days traveling, and had a wonderful time and met some great people. We were, are hosting the Masawa delegation here in a couple of weeks, so on Wednesday the?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh?
Yeah, 3:30.
3:30 PM. If you guys are in the area, we will be welcoming the group right out here in front of the building, and we'll do our handshakes and come in and have a welcoming ceremony with 20 children and 10 adults. So they're bringing a delegation of 30. So Dave Kelts needs all the support he can get, and the city staff is supporting them on a few items, so I will be excited to have them, have them here. I, today, got a pin. I am the Washingtonian of the day, as presented to me by Governor Inslee today. The governor was in town to do the dedication for the transitional housing units that were built next to the, the Old Deaconess Hospital. So we got, well, me and Glenn's team and the whole city got kudos from everybody there for permitting and allowing it to happen, and so it was a, it was a very nice reception today, and so. Help me out, Laura.
So we just sent out email invites for the reimagine, upcoming reimagine workshops. So that's on 9/26. It'll be at the local teleevent center at PIVUS. There's also a link to the discovery report, so that report gives you all of the information that we've discovered to date. And then at the meeting on the 26th, we'll talk about that, talk about whether we missed anything, and then try to identify, out of all of the many things that we could do, which ones are our favorites and which ones should we focus on. So would invite the council and the public to come to that. We'll also have a work session on that next week, so we have a work session on the 21st. I'll go over the discovery report at a high level for you all. And then we also have Mariah Thornock from the Wenatchee Valley Museum and Cultural Center coming to update you all on the, the expansion project and renovation project. And then our team from Public Works talking, giving you an update on the Apple Capital Loop suite of projects and where we are on, on those. Last thing I have is we will be tomorrow posting the open nomination period for the uplift awards. Those were formerly the social rights and civil justice, no, I'm sorry, I got that backwards. Social?
Justice and civil rights.
Thank you. And that's why we call them the uplift awards now, because we also added diversity, equity, inclusion. That's a very, very long title. But we will be celebrating people in the community who have done that work in 2023. So if you have anyone, actually, whether it's an individual or a group, please submit your nominations, and I'll send that information out tomorrow. And then, of course, we'll celebrate and award the nomin, the awardees at the annual Martin Luther King Junior Fest in January. So that's all I got.
And myself and council member Poyer attended Festival of Mehakonis this weekend. I thought it went wonderful. We did get, I did get one noise complaint from someone who lives quite a ways away, but it might have been the angle of the speakers as to where the noise was going, but I don't know what else other complaints we may have had, but I actually think that location is a pretty good little spot. Rob, you want to talk about sewer?
Of course. There's only one person that enjoys talking about sewer more than me, and it's Jessica. So we, we found today that we've got a 36-inch line break at our treatment plant, runs along the viewing window south of the driveway. Night, a line was installed in 1970. It's a steel line wrapped in concrete. We're suspecting that the steel has corroded. And so what's happened was we, we had noticed some settling in the area. We did some borings down there today, and we found that the sewer is leaching into the, into the surrounding ground area. It's not leaching into the river or anything, as far as we can tell, but we have reported to ecology. Mike and Jessica are working on a plan, we're having to set up a bypass line, and we're probably looking next week to have the mayor declare an emergency, so we can move quickly to get a contractor to work on that. The reason, the primary reason that's an emergency, not only just because of the pumping, we can only pump about 4 million gallons a, a day under the, our pump limits. And so if we had a large rain event, we, if it lasted for long duration, we would quickly overflow our EQ basin on the other side of Worthen. So Jessica's a little nervous about that. We want to go ahead and move on this quickly and get this repaired done. Range of magnitude, again, we're just, right now, shooting from the hip, Jessica thinks that we're going to be 1 to 1.5 million on repair. So we, we love our treatment plant, we think it does great things and cleans the water, but it's also, as we've seen lately, it's an old plant that has, it's, it needs continuous repair.
Is this pipe too big to reline? I mean, does it have to be dug up and replaced? Is that the only option, or?
Oh, that's a great question. Actually, we, we, at this point, believe that we'll go in and repair where we think the break is at, and then we are going to actually look at having a company come in and slip-line the whole thing to salvage all the rest of the pipe that's been corroded. So, but even doing that, we're probably in that price range.
All right, council members, anything for the good of the order?
The museum board met yesterday. You'll get a report from that, but on September 30th, Saturday, is the annual night at the museum fundraiser. Get your tickets for food and entertainment and a chance to auction, and the city has graciously donated an auction item, a tour for four, at the winning bidder's choice of either the regional water supply or the wastewater treatment plant.
Excellent.
Jessica worked, worked, worked that out for me. Great. You know, they're actually pretty fascinating facilities. And, and she said with four, she can take people to places that you normally don't go and maybe we wouldn't want to. 36-inch pipe? Yeah, 36-inch pipe. Also, the museum is putting as a call for auditions for scareers for the haunted museum night. I don't have the details on it, but if you're interested in being a scarer, you could contact the, the museum. Last item is our city salary commission met on Tuesday as required by the ordinance that we passed. They had a good support from our HR department, had good questions of me, and they will meet again on the, whatever our council meeting is, 28th, where they'll probably come close to finishing some sort of recommendation on, on council salaries to take effect in 2024.
And just on the budget, the finance committee will see their first round of the budget, and you guys will get your first round of the, and we'll go over it at the finance committee on the 28th as well. But I think the first run of the budget with all the asks will be out sometime next week. Is that right, Brad?
That's correct.
All right, for it. Anything else, council members?
We had our Masawa board meeting last Thursday, going over the last-minute plans for their visit coming up in about a week and a half, and everything's pretty much in arranged. Few details left until he called me the day before yesterday and said, would you be willing to chair the welcome dinner? So I, because that's the area I work in, I guess that's why, anyway. Also, we talked about possibly moving our visit from August to October, because it's brutally hot. Anybody who's been there knows that it's, not only hot, it's humid.
Brutally hot is a good description of what that was. How about miserably hot?
Oh, God, it was awful.
It, it, it about killed me, and I guess it was even worse this year.
I saw he'd beer to drink to keep you even going.
Yeah.
Sorry, sweat, is all I can say.
Yeah.
Well, if, if it's moved, we would go on the anniversary of the flight. So I think it's a great idea. We wouldn't be in a parade, but you know what? There would be a lot of other things we could do, and I think it's excellent. And I'm not sure yet, but they, they're thinking then the, a Masawa group will come every year during apple blossoms. So stand by, there's more to be done about that. We also had a meeting last week for our Columbia River Homeless Task Force, and you saw what we'd been working on there, and things are going along, other ideas are coming out. Glenn and myself and Chief Crown went out, met with Monique, this spoke tonight, and she has some valid concerns. There is no overnight solution to this. It takes time, and we are shackled by the courts, so I, I'm not sure what we can do yet, but we're plugging away.
I will be attending a meeting with Cafe this Tuesday, and we're going to be talking about gangs, crimes, and graffiti prevention. We'll see how that goes. I have asked to invite the council, so if you guys are interested, it will be Tuesday, 6 o'clock.
So I, I have RSVP'd, so I am going. If we get too many council members, we need to make it a public meeting and get it advertised, so if more of?
I have signed up to go as well.
Okay, so we need to let Laura or Tammy know, and we can at least publicize it, perhaps. Is it a 24-hour notice?
It's special. You need to have four.
Yeah, because there's only two.
But it might be easier just to advertise it, and just say, at the Cafe event, there will be a majority of the council, there could be a majority of the council members attending an event, no action will be taken. I don't know. The port does that all the time, and I just ignore all of them, but. Is there, anybody else going besides Jose and Linda?
I am.
I have a conflict, so I can't.
I have a conflict, I cannot. Okay, so then only the three of you are going, so then as long as the rest of you don't go, you're not going? Are you going?
I, I'm not going. I, I guess I'm not.
So what I'm getting to the point is, are we going to advertise this as a special meeting, or you're not?
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not attending.
If you want to keep it open and play by ear and see if you can or not, then we just publish a notice.
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Why don't you just publish the notice? Just publish it. That way, if you go, you're there.
Thank you.
All right.
I just have a little thing. Yesterday, we had a community action council, we did our big kind of strategic planning meeting, really excited about the new facility. They wanted to thank, you know, the city and everything for the support. And then on that, today, we got to tour the facility with the governor, and that was really cool, and he was really pumped about everything we're doing. And then we went to a lady's house who was a beneficiary of the weatherization program, and I thought it was so cool. Well, one, cool because the governor came and, well, you know, was talking with everyone, but two, to find out that through the program, she went from a $200 a month energy bill to $23 a month. And so, I mean, that's really sweet, but yeah.
Awesome. All right. Anything else for the good of the order?
I'll make it real quick. I met with the WDA, we had discussed a lot of things, but I hope, I was hoping Chief Crown was here, because our parking enforcement and?
He is out there.
He is out there.
I'm telling you.
It is great. We are getting some behavior modification, which is excellent. And so I'm excited that, that he's out there, and the ones that have been complaining about